Training here tonight? Right.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting of the Oregon School District. And it's August 17th. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance to the flag. A moment of silence for Doris May. She was a bus driver for us for over thirty years. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical, the spirit, and justice. Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Struth, do we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Magich.
Yes, President.
Um, Mrs. Muller.
Here.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
And Mr. Zvisky.
Yes.
Please silence all personal electronic devices during the meeting. And may I have a motion to adopt the agenda as written with the addition of an addendum, item X, A and B.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
Mr. Magich.
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky.
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller.
Yes. We have no staff in community, but you.
If I could, well, I just, I received something just a couple of days ago, just, I just want to acknowledge, so it's not a person here, but one of our teachers here at Clay High School is Bob Bundy. You may or may not know Bob, been here quite a while, but he was commended for his leadership and involvement on the International HOSA Competition Events Management Team. So he was obviously part of the organization and leadership team for this past year's competitions for HOSA, which is an organization that is part of our, you know, Clay High School Career Tech Program. So I just wanted to give a shout out and congratulations to Bob on his, and I have a letter here that I can, I could forward on to you that I just got.
Perfect.
So, yes.
Always proud, always proud of our teachers.
Absolutely, yep.
Let's get public participation, Mrs. Struth, do we have any cards?
I have no cards.
Okay. Treasuries report.
Thank you, Mrs. Muller. Briefly run through the list of much discussed all this at our finance committee. You are all highly aware that the sale of the land of five acres in City Core Town has been completed, money is in the PI account, all signed, sealed, delivered. There is the transfer tonight on the agenda, and it is the band, and that is, of course, for the band fee we collected last year. It's going to be put into the PI fund for future band expenditures. Reviewing the true tax record, it's, it's going to be a little odd this year because of the, um, the differences with the way the new state formula is going to be recorded accounting wise, so there'll be some unusual differences this year. Just giving you a heads up, well, real estate taxes, those don't change. The, the large discrepancy, not discrepancy, but the large increase is really they advanced more this year than they had last July, that's not a big deal. For foundation, no, foundation will now be including the net open enrollment money, the money coming in minus the money coming out. So that makes it look like we're getting a bunch more, which, you know, it's just a net, it's just a different way of accounting for it. Other operating revenue on the revenue side is going to look like we've lost quite a bit, but again, that does not include the open enrollment money, it's not being posted separately down there, so it's truly just an accounting adjustment. Expenditures, salaries, we continue to pay off the prior salaries, we pay them through the summer, the new salary does not hit until actually September. Fringe benefits, last year we had a large credit in July, so it's, you know, overall, though, we did have a seven percent reduction in our insurances this year. Purchase services, the decreases are again because we are not posting open enrollment or the charter school expenses, so that again holds odd. Our material supplies are up, the district, we're planning on coming back full swing, so our supplies will be up. And last year, this time, we received our first refund from the PDC, so what a difference this year makes. As I said, there will be many adjustments, we aren't going to have the final cap until October, and that's when we hide a firmification, so we will have an adjustment to our budgets and our forecast at that time. Miscellaneous items, we do have Red Rover, which is a subsystem up and running, currently training elementary secretaries so that they can accept money, and basically it's like a teller situation, will be accepted and posted automatically. And Thursday is my first GAAP meeting, so with the auditors, so the audit season begins. Analysts, the questions, that's all I have.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the treasuries report, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or questions for Mrs. Struth? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
Mr. Magich.
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky.
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller.
Yes. Moving on to leadership.
Dean Sandrich. Dean, thank you.
Got to get a head twist.
All right.
Good evening, and thanks for having me here, this is actually the perfect timing. Why, excuse us?
That's all right. This is, this is the perfect timing for this presentation because the work that's done over the summer is, is just heroic, and they are superheroes, and we, and I, I love to acknowledge their work because it's, it's such a, a great accomplishment. But starting at about the end of May, this is pictures of me, and I'm looking at the clock, and it, it just happens, and summers go faster than that, even though we had a couple more additional weeks this year to prepare, it always feels like this is what I'm doing the entire summer, I'm watching the clock, and it feels like that extreme makeover show. But every year, we do a lot of different things, and the, the normal is scrubbing, stripping, waxing every classroom, cafeteria, hallway in the district, we, we paint, we had nearly fifty painting projects this summer. We do the weeding, trimming, mulching, mulching of playgrounds. It's amazing how, how quickly that malt breaks down into, into just mud and dirt, but we patch and crack fill, we have two hundred and seventeen acres, no, I'm sorry, two hundred and seventy-one acres district wide, much of that is pavement, and, and pavement just deteriorates, that's its job, I think, and, and what we have to do every year is maintain that by crack filling and grease sealing. The bus inspection, every year, the highway patrol has to come out and inspect our buses to make sure that we're ready to go. Not to mention the kitchen preparation. This year, I just want to name, I don't want to name everyone because I miss somebody and I feel awful, but Dylan Ekman and Ann Proffer, who are a para and a food service worker in our, in our buildings, been on the painting, and they are rock stars, they are amazing painters, and the reason we got fifty projects done is because of them, they're just, they did such a great job. The custodians, again, I'm not going to name them by name, but if, if you look at it, even a week ago, we had some buildings that, that you could swear that they're not going to be done in time for, for teachers and kids, and they just get them done, and, and they're amazing, so I, I wanted to give them a shout out, our maintenance crew, over and above every year, and I just keep piling more on, and I think they, they hate seeing me in about January to, to give them the list for the coming summer. Shane Hornstein and Lucas Ammerman are our mechanics, and they have taken us into this century, they are, they help with our maintenance folks, our regular, our regular truck fleet in addition to our bus fleet, and, and if you haven't been out there in a while, you may want to just go out and take a look at it, they, their shop looks amazing, and, and we hit two home runs, back-to-back home runs in a short period of time. And then lastly, we have a new supervisor in food service, Julie Kalistic, and a new supervisor in transportation, Josh Shannon, so all of that together made for a pretty busy and hectic summer, but I think we're ready to go, I know we're ready to go. So some of the stretch projects, the, the stretch projects really fall on our maintenance oftentimes, but this year, we were bringing Blackman, that operation out to Wynn, to the Wynn Center, and it's going to be called CEO, Center for Educational Opportunity. And to prepare for them, we had to renovate the entire bottom hallway of, of Wynn, and you know that, that's one of our older buildings in the district, and under, it's about four feet under grade, and, and the work that we did kind of showed that, we had to really take it apart, do a little bit of work, but we're moving the preschool up to the new, quote-unquote, new is what, sixteen years old or somewhere in there now, but up to the main hallway for those kindergarten classrooms, and they're thrilled at the new size and the new, the new room space. In addition, our maintenance folks did the next eight areas of classrooms at I, and what we do is we take the old tile out, and we replace that, we do all new ceilings, all new LED lights, and, and the, the tile is, is fresh, the paint is fresh, and it's a, it's a brand new place. The old lights are kind of a yellow in, in color, if you stand out in the hallway and look at it, they're, they're yellowish, and these are much brighter, just much more conducive to learning, and it's, it's, uh, it's quite an improvement. But also this summer, we're getting boiler replacements at Eisenhower and Star and at Wynn, and as well as a new freezer at Star, it's going to have that walkout, and that's all still in progress, we've got about another, just under a week to go to get the Star freezer in, but I think we're going to make it there as well. It truly is that extreme makeover that we're just right up to the last bit, we're, we're finishing up. This year, we had some, some COVID hangover that doors, floor tiling, and paint are those long lead items, and, and so we've got at Wynn, we've got a couple doors that we've had to go to our Plan B and Plan C to make sure that we can get things done, but again, we're going, we are ready for students. All of this work really paying dividends for us, and it, and it's nice, Gardner Company, so periodically, we, we entertain different vendors who say that they can save us money or bring us projects or, or whatever that is. So the Gardner Company was the latest one, and they were really good to work with, we gave them information, and they came back and, and we're going to do an Energy Star rating on our buildings. You've probably heard of Energy Star, you've seen them on refrigerator tags, but they, they do a, a rating for each building, and as a district, a seventy-five is considered Energy Star rated or certified, and that just says that we are in a better place, energy conservation and, and, and all of that, we're better than seventy-five percent of the, of the other districts, so we're in the top twenty-five percent, and that's on a nationwide basis. So, so they, with that in mind, we did the energy analysis, and in the district, we're at a seventy-seven. Now, we've got some schools, like our oldest schools, Jerusalem and Star, that are under that Energy Star rated, but we also have Eisenhower, for example, at a ninety-seven, we were better than ninety-seven percent. EKOE is at a ninety percent, and Clay is at an eighty-two percent, but all of that together is a seventy-seven, which, which basically in their brains were saying, for other districts, they say seventy-five percent, if we can get you to seventy-five percent efficiency, you can save X amount of dollars. Well, if they would have, if they would have done that and implemented in our district what their savings measures are, it actually would have gone down two percent and cost us nearly fifty-four thousand dollars. So we are fifty-four thousand dollars ahead of what they would do in, in their normal schedule, so it's been paying dividends. A lot of that truly are, are the efficient boilers that we put in, the, the, um, the LED lighting that we put into the, the parking lot in the classrooms. So it's, it's a, it's a tribute, it's taken us some time to get there, we should finish Eisenhower next year and move on to Jerusalem the following year, and over the next five to seven years, we'll have the entire district LED lit and running pretty efficiently. So another one is gym floor or gym lighting, I should say, if you recall, it's probably been about six, seven years ago, we went to the instant on-off lights in the gym, but there's still fluorescents, and fluorescents at that time, the LED did not have the technology that would do the job well, but now that technology is available, so in the very near future, we're going to be swapping out those lights, they'll still be instant on, instant off, but it'll be LED, and again, we'll see a savings for that as well. So moving forward and on the drawing board, is we still have machine trades auto locker room, we have a great problem, we have more young ladies that are looking to be in auto and machine trades, and, and over the last few years, we've had trouble finding out where their locker room is going to be, and we have a small one right now across from the career tech office, but they keep growing, so we are going to split up the machine trades in auto and make it a true guys and gals locker room, and that's going to be a nice addition, that's going to happen during the school year, this first quarter, yeah, we have that on the drawing board. Systems, Esther is doing one thing for us, it's, it's allowing us to really look forward as it comes to our systems. Through all of the renovations in the district, we now have three different clock systems, we now have different HVA systems, we have three different alarm systems, and we're looking at a way to put all the fobs and lights and HVAC and consolidate them and really set us up for years and years to come, so I'm looking at that. Air conditioning in the big spaces, we're looking at the auditorium we did in, at Facet, duplicating that at Eisenhower and maybe at Clay, we're getting some prices for that and kind of a stay tuned, a little teaser to, to show you what that might look like. And as you know, the performing arts studio is, is one of those wow projects, it's going to be spectacular, hopefully it'll come in, the bids right in line, and we'll be able to move forward with that even at this fall. So in the past, we've done community surveys, and every year, every time that we've done that, community survey tells us that our facility and our care of our facilities is right up toward the top, and, and so the community has given us that nod of approval, and, and now vendors are giving us that same nod of approval, that we're doing the right things, we're on the right track, and, and I'm really proud of the folks that help us stay on that right track, our maintenance, our custodial, our summer workers, they just do a fantastic job, and they really care about our district. So this year, we had to move to Plan B and Plan C to make sure things are ready for the students, but again, I can assure you that we're ready, and we're ready for a, a great school year overall. Are there any questions at all?
Just to comment, congratulations to you and all the staff. It's, given the challenges that, that this, this, this role has faced in the past year, what I have seen here is some of the buildings, it's, they're, the folks are doing a lot of the job, and the fact that we're able to get the high Energy Star rating, and the fact that the people who are recognizing, I think is a tribute to you and your team, so congratulations.
Thank you, I will definitely pass that on to them, they did work hard all summer for that.
And I'd like to give kudos to our mechanics, that bus garage out there is like, nothing against the old people, because they knew where everything was, but the new ones, it is so organized, it's like, I feel I could come in and do something.
If you move something, they would know it.
They'd know right away.
Just got a picture of Carol changing a bus tire.
But thank you, I will definitely pass that on to all the folks, appreciate it.
And Dean, thanks for presenting tonight, you know, this vision that Dean described with the lights and the energy efficiency is Dean's vision, I mean, Dean's been doing this a long time, and it's his vision that he had from the very beginning, is to begin to take this district, and it's Dean, I mean, Dean is the one that's organized this and planned this and worked with his folks, you know, just working with Jane and I just on some, what do you think about, but it's, I just want to give him credit because his vision for this long-term, you know, efficiency in operations and energy and, and all those types of things is, is very much passion of his, and, and we want to continue that long, you know, long past Dean, long past me, because it's something that is, is ongoing, and this vision of in ten years, they have everything, or seven years, they have LED everywhere, I mean, you know, what districts are doing that don't have that vision is they're going and dropping, you know, gazillion dollars on somebody to come in and do it, not sure if, you know, they'll really recognize all that savings, we're doing it in a steady way with our people, and so anyways, thank you, Dean, I mean, you're, you're a huge asset to our district, and what we do without you, and I appreciate what you do every year. Thank you, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, does anyone have a need for an executive session? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. This is with the addendum that we have, are there any items that the members of the Board, Mr. Cole, from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing none, we need a motion to vote on it?
Motion to approve the revised consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
Mr. Magich.
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky.
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller.
Yes. Okay, moving on to item eleven, new business, we have a resolution to approve our school bus stops for the twenty-one, twenty-one school year. Whereas the Ohio Administrative Code states that the superintendent or his disney must determine annually the location of the bus stops, and the school bus stops have been established, we have therefore now resolved by the Board of Education approval of the list of established school bus stop locations at the Oregon City School District, and we have further resolved that copy of approved list of school bus stop locations to be contained on file in the Oregon City Schools Board Office and the Oregon City Schools Transportation Department. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Got a couple of questions. Dean, I'm, two things, I think last year, we talked about Nate was looking at doing something with Power School to shoot out the bus, you know, sort of mainly no, having shootouts, I know there was delays last year, there's been delays this year, some people still haven't gotten a lot of calls, are we any further with the more electronic method to get those out?
We are, we are further, but we're not there, so we're trying to do both at this time.
And then, a couple of them said, maybe the addresses of the bus stops were not, just about Cedar Point Road and Maintenance Garage, like, so, you know, some of the parents have, maybe might not know where that's at, I don't know if that's something we look in the future to be, we can have this bus stop, the name you guys do, but then have more of a description or address or something that better identifies it, as we do that.
I was, we were on Focus Three today, training most of the day, I reached out to Josh and Terry, and, and we've got a meeting coming up tomorrow, but I wasn't able to get everyone today.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions or discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Struth.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
Mr. Magich.
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky.
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller.
Yes. Item B, our transportation contracts, leaves of our bylaw, we must do this for the Lemon family, the Hess family, the Gargak family, the Raymond family, the Teal family, and the Dudenbeck family, and I have a motion for our transportation contract.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
Mr. Magich.
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky.
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller.
Item C, the bus bid resolution, whereas the Oregon Board of Education wishes to advertise and receive bids for the purchase of three seventy-one passenger conventional type school buses, therefore we have resolved that the Oregon Board of Education wishes to participate and authorize ready solutions to advertise and receive bids on said fourth and fifth as current specifications submitted for the cooperative purchase of three seventy-one passenger conventional school buses. This is on our regular rotation of bus purchases, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, questions? Roll call.
Mr. Magich.
Yes.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky.
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller.
Yes. Item D, the substitute teacher compensation, we need a motion to approve the compensation of one hundred and twenty-five dollars per day for substitute teachers. Mr. Mr. Gregory has researched that, and it puts us right in line with.
Yeah, Mrs. Struth actually reached out to all the other, well, Lucas family primarily, right, and so she provided me a list, and, and student public is higher than us, I think we were second, and then there were several, like just a couple dollars underneath us, and then a few, so, so I feel like we need to keep it where we ended last year, which was one twenty-five, it certainly is not going to hurt in substitute numbers, it's certainly not wrong, so, yeah.
Not easy.
Yeah, not easy.
So may I have a, a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Quick question, how, so what we did last year was a temporary for the school, so this now means that you're moving forward.
Okay, yep.
Anything further? Roll call.
Mr. Magich.
Yes.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky.
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller.
Yes. Item E, the buses for Sohan, we need a motion to approve the use of Oregon City School Buses to the Sohan Park and Drive on September third, twenty twenty-one, and the state crew shuttle bus for the week of August twenty-ninth through September fourth. This is a fundraiser for our foundation, but we need approval to use the buses, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, questions? Roll call.
Mr. Magich.
Yes.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky.
Yes.
Mrs. Muller.
Yes. Item F, fee schedules, we need a motion to revise the following fees, the high school symphonic concert marching band, twenty dollars for sheet music software and accounting fee, and seventy dollars for band participation. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? This is a revised schedule. Roll call.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
Mr. Magich.
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky.
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller.
Yes. Item G, extracurricular trips, we need a motion to approve the following extracurricular trips, the Clay High School Model UN to go to the Canadian American Security Council in Lansing, Michigan, December two through four, to attend the Mid-American competition in Calhoun, Michigan, from March second through the fifth, and to attend the Lake Erie International Competition in Youngstown, April first through, uh, through the third. This is our award-winning Model UN, they are very, very good, they've won many awards, so, um, may we have a motion to send them?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Savick.
Yes.
And Mr. Magich, the second.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Zvisky.
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller.
Yes. Item H, disposal of equipment and materials, a motion to dispose of the following A through J, one hundred and seventy-seven items, including books, manuals, supplementary materials, and that sort of thing, may I have a motion for disposal, please?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
Mr. Magich.
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky.
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller.
Yes. Mr. Gregory, it's your turn.
All right, thank you. Um, last two days, I just want to give a brief update, I appreciate all the staff in Oregon, attending, or many of the staff members anyways in Oregon, attending our opening day over at Facet, thank you to Mr. Savick, Ms. Muller for, for being able to, to come to that on the opening day, we appreciate that very much, but that day went well, again, that day was a little bit more focused on kind of some of the stuff that we want to get out and share that we do every type, every year, Tom Sneed, and I call Tom Sneed the Eagles group, played for the, the audience, for the teachers, so he did a great job, they put a band together with two or three teachers, a couple of students, and they sing, and it was just wonderful. It's such an uplifting, exciting way to start the day, and we had to be there to feel it, but they are super talented and, and super caring to do what they did. So had a great day, today, we had another great day of PD with training around the district on the Focus Three concept, which is our culture training that we've been implementing and talking about for about three years now, right before COVID, we were getting ready to actually train all our staff, and that came to a screeching halt, obviously, as many things did, but we picked that back up today, and by all reports that I received at the end of the day, that those, those in-service sessions, those trainings were very much an impactful day for our staffs. Positive, uplifting, uh, it's very introspective, if, if you get into the. If, if you get into the, the tools, they talk about Focus Three, you're really talking about looking within yourself at your own behavior and how it influences everything around you, whether that's your work life or your family life or, you know, anything around you and, and how much, uh, influence you have with others if, if you want to become that leader. And it really talks about how you deal with things, you know, whether you deal with it emotionally or do you deal with it in a disciplined way? Anyway, so it's, 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 uh, you know, a multi-hour type of some training and, and we didn't get through everything and we're going to finish it on that September third PD day in the morning, just for an hour to, to two hours, just to kind of wrap it all up, uh, in some of the buildings. But I'll tell you, I was, I was, I was glowing at the end of the day with the feedback I got from the, the individuals that, uh, you know, some leadership, some teachers, I mean, it was kind of a mixed bag. So very excited about how today went. So again, thank you for supporting that whole program. Um, this is, I, I, I talked to Jim and just asked me, uh, they're asking me to give a just little update on that whole, uh, painting project and just, just to FYI, you know what, what it is. So, so Mr. Zviski provided this. We certainly want to thank Chris Walzack and Beth Turner, they were leading, uh, troops on painting for the kids. But if you get out of the parking lots, uh, you can see how it's grown over the last three years from only forty-six seniors taking advantage of it to eighty-six to a hundred and six kids. So anyways, a nice activity that we had this year that we didn't have last year, uh, because of COVID and, uh, raised some good money for some awesome things. Want to thank just a couple of companies, TRC and St. Charles, both for donating school supplies. Um, I know TRC is working with the United Way and they are donating book bags to, uh, both Toledo Public and then, uh, twenty-five book bags to us. So those will be coming, they did a media release just yesterday. So I do appreciate that and then we'll divide those, you know, backpacks once we receive them from our elementary schools. Uh, and, uh, obviously Mr. Zviski knows about this, but, uh, they, uh, St., uh, St. Charles is donating school supplies once again to Star Elementary. So we'll be going out here early September, I believe, with that they did.
The date on that is Thursday, September second at nine to ten. And I'll be Craig Almond, Hospital President, uh, Sister Dorothy Coon from our mission services. And then, uh, Tricia and Helen, myself, after something our mission services does each. We collect and donate, I think, and we brought it between Star, Coy, you know, back, uh, on the last time we did it, um, on media, Monday, but we got some, we got, I think, we had other TV stations writing the press out there, so we're hoping to do the same as you.
Yep, yeah, it's awesome. Thank you very much. I mean, caring about your local schools is certainly, TRC and St. Charles have done that for years and, and, uh, we can't say thank you enough. Um, just a quick update on sports. Uh, sports are already underway. We had our Friday night soccer game under lights last Friday and, uh, you'll see, uh, you know, you'll see tennis. They've got benny batches and I'm sure the ball's up and running. And we got our first football game this Friday at home meeting. Uh, the ticketing system is working well. Uh, you know, for the most part, uh, it's been more about, um, getting back to people at a time we matter than it has been a problem with any of the system. So, uh, we've had a lot of seniors getting good passes, pretty much flawlessly. Uh, I do want to thank Val Hinaosa specifically. Val is our receptionist, if you know Val, up at the, uh, front desk in my building or at the administration building. We kind of dumped this whole ticketing thing on her. And, cause we really didn't have any place else to have someone monitor the tickets. Plus, we need people during the day, someone to come in and, you know, be available for, for seniors and others to come in. And, uh, she has, you know, she has embraced it. It's, it's been, it was, she was a quick learner, she's still learning a little bit, but she is so pleasant, has worked so well with certainly our seniors, which are the main group that come in because they check ID, but, but others that, that need to come in and get some help. Um, there is an app that we're going to start marketing, which makes even buying tickets even simpler. It is so easy, I mean, even I can figure it out in under thirty seconds. So, I mean, it is, it is, uh, a very simple tool. So again, um, oh, I also want to thank Emily Silverson. She is a paraprofessional in our district, but she, uh, is very much a big athletic, um, person who supported Mark Beach and the athletic department, volunteers her time just about every day. She's also been a big part of this whole ticketing backend process. I just want to give a shout out to Emily for all the work that she's done. I don't know if anybody's heard differently with the tickets than maybe what I'm presenting. I know I have got a single call, uh, about ticketing process seems to be working. Like I said, I think we worked out the email. We had, really, when I say delay, it was only a day, but some people, a day is an eternity, you know, when they're looking for a question or concern. So, so we try to make sure that we are addressing everything every day.
And Hal, the one, I know you've answered a lot of my questions these times when people reach out to me, but the one that just came up a couple of times is, yeah, the Latin athlete pass.
Yep.
That right now only a fall athlete can get the athlete pass?
No, but, um, the, a spring or winter athlete can buy the pass if they're willing to pay their fee upfront now. And that's how it was before too, if they're willing to...
How do they pay the fee and...
And they get cut, then we, we get it back to them.
It's not, but, but.
Yeah, it's not up in there to be paid yet.
Well, then I guess we can work through that, but I know that's the stance we're taking on in terms of, we don't want, obviously, somebody who's a spring athlete wants to go get taken out and go all year if they're willing to pay their one fifty pay-to-play fee, um, ahead of time. So if it's not there, then, and we know that request, then we just need to get up in there. I guess I'll look at Jane about the fee part.
Yeah, well, I don't put those in.
However we assess it, yeah. I mean, we could certainly do that.
Because then, then, yes, once you figure out how we can do that, get some sort of social media communication out so the athlete, that's probably the biggest question.
Okay, that's a fair question and, and I know we've talked about it on, on several comments, at least Mr. Beach and I have, about how we do that, so if those requests are, I don't know if they're going to Mr. Beach or not, but, but I'll talk to him to be looking. Right now, I guess the simple answer is, uh, let's get a, let's get the question in on tickets@oregancs.org. Or if an athlete, I mean, we start school here this week or next, so they can go down and talk to Mr. Beach right there in the office and we can get that taken care of. But yeah, we don't want to deny any of those kids. And, and, and I hope you believe it or hope you understand that we, we really believe these passes, this pass structure we put in place, it's a good deal for people. You know, I mean, it, it's a good deal. The only other thing that's a little bit, people be a little frustrated is for years, and when I say years, I mean, probably between thirty and forty years, some different types of senior citizen passes have been put out there by different groups. You know what I mean? And, and some of them legit and some maybe, maybe they weren't so legit, you know? There were groups out maybe on their own without the sanction of, of the district, years ago. Uh, we are not accepting any of those passes. So we're asking all our seniors to, they want a pass, it's a new additional twenty-five dollar. But where it's getting a little confusing is we continue to call it the gold people pass. Just I guess out of habit, I guess out of, you know, it, it kind of associated with the senior group, uh, but it did cause some confusion at times for a few individuals.
So what? Um, procedures we have in place, someone that has the hard card that thinks they can do that on game day. Do we let them in and we're going to say, hey, not, not do it?
No.
Or, I mean, the...
I mean, I guess, well, a game time decision, I guess we'll have to do that, but as soon as we let them in, then if he comes. Now, we can help them right there at that time. Um, I mean, it, it, it's, this is the cutting of the cord, if you will, for lack of a better word. I mean, and, and it's difficult. Now, we don't want to be mean to anyone, but we've allowed for the last two or three years, these cards to just kind of continue because no one wanted to cut the cord. We cut the cord this year. And so I guess it's just continue to try to get the word out. I mean, we're not going to be of not just mean or whatever to somebody who comes in, comes up to a game, thinks they can get in.
What do you mean, having someone on your college, that has someone at the gate?
That can help.
At least the first couple of games.
To help them buy.
That would be good, that's a good, that would be great of that. Okay, good. We have not had that conversation.
We have to be prepared for that because, you know, my people tried again in last year, they had this other ticket and they still flash that, I think.
And I, and I understand it because it, you know, they're sold, hey, lifetime card or whatever. I mean, I, I understand it, but, but at, at some point, and this is the point, you know, we have to maybe go back on that and, and so, like I said, in some cases, it wasn't even a district sanction, uh, situation. So, any other questions?
Other, just two, and one time we had the, the one with the, eight with the band goes and someone, uh, doing, that was the pass entrance.
You know, I don't know if we're going to have two, I think we're going to have two of the football.
Just the main one, like, we're not going to use the, where the band goes as the entrance if we've got...
I don't believe so, it's going to be upfront.
So you don't have, you just...
Yeah.
Okay.
I, 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 I'm not sure for football, I haven't had that conversation yet.
Okay.
I'm hoping he has those details worked out.
And to reiterate, this, these passes are through our entire league. It's not just us going out on our own.
Right, yep.
Just so everybody knows that.
And ticket prices as well. And really, they're for all games all year. And there was a question as well about do, do grandparents who live outside of the district, uh, are, are they allowed to buy passes? And, and, and it was a point of discussion, we had that discussion, but really, when you started to think about it, it's like, well, that's who's going to come to see their grandkids and not all of them are going to live in Oregon. Of course, we're going to allow them to buy a pass because they're, they're buying it to come see Oregon athletes. So, so if anyone were to ask you, you know, hey, I live in Genoa, can I still buy a pass to the football or to, to whatever? It's like, yes, you can.
Um, actually, I wouldn't be surprised if we didn't use both gates because we, everybody has to go through it.
Yeah, we'd have a lot of people.
It's a little slower, I mean, it's...
We were using by both the visitors concession stand and then, um,
The other window.
And then down a little further, I assume those two are going to still...
We had the free though, we had that, uh...
Yeah, I know, I know.
Center one, the pass.
We had the band, the main ticket, and then, then the concession side.
It just takes a little longer when you're standing.
Yeah, the question will be, do we open up the main ticket one? I know we're going to do where the band is and I know we're going to do, um, assuming we're going to do where the other concession is. Cause those, uh, just so everyone knows, just because we're going cashless and we're not going to be selling tickets again, those little ticket booths are going to be, uh, no longer. They will be removed here, I don't know, Mr. Sanders, you have no when, but one day they may, it may not just be there. And, uh...
Can't we build something in there?
Well, we, we've got some plans. The Board wants to authorize some, uh, big dollars tonight for a big project. We've got some ideas and some plans, but I don't think we're quite ready to put a shovel in the ground, but we have some ideas.
The alternative maybe to use those, those old booths, at least for the initial first few games, put the people that are running the electronic transactions in there, especially if it's pouring down rain. So just a thought, maybe worth sitting on them for just a little bit and doing those transactions in the booths so that people can go in. Because there will be, so if people catch on to the team there, we will be, okay, some walkover.
And that Friday night soccer game, every, we got delayed thirty, thirty minutes and, you know, it poured hard, so. You're right, poor, poor man's son Grant was out there drenched. All right, and, uh, quick, quick update on enrollment. Uh, as of today, we have thirty-three hundred and forty-two, thir-, uh, three thousand three hundred and forty-two students enrolled. We ended the last year with three hundred, three thousand three hundred and thirty-five, just to give you a very almost break even numbers. Uh, we do have, obviously, some individuals that we, that are like in the queue, you know what I mean? They're, they're, they say they're coming, but they haven't turned in their, all their registration stuff. So they're not in Power School and not in those numbers. So I didn't ask for the total number of those, but for kindergarten, I asked because we're watching, right now, we have two hundred and twenty-two fully enrolled kindergarteners, probably about twenty-six in that pending, pending category. Now, not all of those twenty-six are probably going to arrive, uh, because tomorrow literally is the first day for those conferences that our kindergarteners are doing. So they may have changed their mind, they may be just not giving us the stuff we need, they may show up, you know, it's, every year, it's a little bit of all of that. Uh, but if they all show up, we're, we're right now at a point where we can maintain this ten teachers that we have, but if it fills up of the, uh, those twenty-six and more, it's more like twenty-two because we're a little bit over our spots, we may be looking higher in that fourth or that eleventh or that additional, uh, kindergarten teacher, which each year we kind of watch whether we need that or not. So we're kind of right at that cusp. So keep it posted, we're, we're going to kind of get through this week and, and see what happens on Monday. And then finally, um, COVID and kind of what's going on, um, every day, every day is a new message. Every day is more, is a more intense message, every day. Literally, every half a day is a more intense message about, um, the request by state and local officials for school districts to implement a mask, uh, requirement, all right? So it's building and it's building heavy and it's building hard. Uh, I spent the two hours before this meeting, uh, with, first of all, the governor's meeting. He had a, he had a three-thirty, uh, press conference and then we had an after-call meeting with doctors from all around the state, ODE officials, government officials, again, all saying the same message. So, um, I, I'm just putting this out there, I, 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 I could, I could see, uh, a mask mandate coming, uh, this week even. I'm going to, there's some additional information I'm hoping to gather in the next, tomorrow, um, to, I guess, make a different recommendation if we want to go there. But I, I'm certainly, you know, we can have some conversations about that. I'm just telling you, it's, it's, you, it's, it's, it's looking like it's heading that way pretty fast and pretty furious. So, a-again, I, I'm not going to predict what other school districts intend to do. Um, but we will, I'll have more information on that tomorrow.
Two questions on that, Hal. So is it different kind of than last year where the county was coordinating all schools kind of being consistent, were kind of on our own?
Yeah, a good, good way to say it. There is no coordination except for, you know, leaders within districts coordinating with themselves or coordinating together. There's, it's, it's, it's very clear that, that no one else is going to own a mask mandate but by local ownership or entity, period. I mean, it's, it was told that way today, very clear, that, that isn't going to happen. So don't, you know, you, here's what we want you to do kind of thing, you know, but that isn't going to happen. Yes, oh, a hundred percent. I mean, and, and I feel it. I feel the pressure, it's up to my, at least my ears, it's not maybe above my eyes yet, but it's at least to my ears. And I understand both sides, I, I do, I do, I do, I do, I understand it. And listening to the statistics, it is, it is, it is, the statistics are rapidly growing. Statistics. Now, again, you can look at different statistics. Uh, Mr. Zviski, I talk about hospitals and locals and maybe they just don't scare you as much when you look at that particular statistic, you know? Uh, anyways, I, I guess I'm just telling the public and telling the board that, that we start school Monday with every, with all the kids and if something's going to happen, at least that recommendation from the superintendent, it's going to happen before Monday. Is that fair?
Yeah, it's like one, one, I think I've seen conflicting information about masks and buses. Is it mandatory?
It's absolutely a hundred percent mandatory.
Thought I saw some communication said it wasn't, but...
Yeah, no.
Okay.
No, we've double, triple, and quadruply clarified the, the mask. It's a, it comes from an actual CDC order that's in place, an actual order, not, not recommendations like a guidance, like most of what the CDC or the health department is putting out now, they're all guidance and recommendations. But, but it, it really boils down to, um, what they're, what they're requesting heavily is to do something that is a, at least to start the year, like a thirty-day type of scenario, right now. Like, if you can nip it in the bud right now, then maybe it won't have to be all year kind of scenario. So, so I don't know. I, I mean, I, I don't want to predict anything tonight. I, I really, I mean, I, I feel like I can, you know, uh, have more information after tomorrow and I can certainly, you know, share that with you individually and we can, you know, go from there. But, but I, I will say that if, if a change is going to happen, it's obviously going to happen, it should happen before Monday, uh, when all our students and staff arrive, so.
Yeah, Mr. Zviski, there was a news channel who led a very misleading, uh, item a week, a month ago about transportation. If that was low on, that was about, and then they never rescinded that, so I know where you're coming from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's my report, thank you.
Couple of other things, um, they said at the beginning of school year, you know, I get like asked a lot of questions. Just a shout out to the, you know, Terry and Josh and transportation staff. I sent you guys a copy due on email, but Terry and Josh had an upset parent, you know, non-understanding people in training stuff. You know, within the hour, she responded, me, said, we'll get them in an hour, that parent responded back about, they got everything they need and was very happy about that. So thanks to the, you know, transportation staff, I'll always really respond to. Then just to, you know, publicly thank Hal to, I bug him day, night, weekend with questions I get via Facebook, text, email, um, very quick to respond and make sure I got the info I need to get back out to the, uh, people that ask that, so I do appreciate that. Last one is more, I'll say personal nature for me, at Clay with Chromebook Distribution Wednesday, Thursday. Picture date that day. Not every kid needs, needs a Chromebook, they already have one. Without having work and practice scheduled, parents like me can't get them either day to get a picture. You know, I, I had some email on Jim, but, you know, one, I assume there's a picture recite day scheduled somewhere along the line.
There will be, yeah, I mean, there will be, I don't exactly know when that is, but...
And, you know, I guess in the future, you know, we'll have to look at, well, they'll be sending most, most Chromebooks home to the kids over the summer moving forward, you know, that's the, how we're going to go.
Yeah.
So this kind of, you know, thing is, I don't want to say it's outdated, but not everyone needs to come to school Wednesday, Thursday. He's got freshman orientation on Friday, he could, could be a bad picture people get that day too.
And it's, it's an age-old debate, totally, you know, every year I've been here, it's a debate of you do it before school or after school. Every principal tells you before school, they want to take time away from after. Every principal tells you before school, they want to take time away from after school or once school starts, because it just disrupts the whole, you know, the whole day. And, but there's conflicts, like you're describing, that are real. So you just kind of manage your way through it, and I'll talk with Mr. Jersey, too. I don't know about how quickly this will come.
You know the thing I thought was with you, right?
Yeah, primarily, right, primarily, yeah.
I mean, I assume the freshman-
I'd be-
I'd be taking Saturday or going to picture.
I, yeah, I don't know. A little bit of detail I don't quite get into, so I'm sorry.
Like, if I don't bring the kid Wednesday, Thursday, so freshmen, sophomore, they're going to miss them.
Well, it's an automatic death in every grade, of course, to start the year. But you can dig out of that pretty quick if you don't get a picture. You know, we'll work with cases, and we'll be fine. One way or another.
Just bring cookies, Mr. Zbyski.
Yeah. Anything else? That was, that was my report.
Okay, do we, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have any old business? Okay, committee reports, finance, here, do you have anything?
We did meet, and obviously Jane covered the main points. The good news is, and I think several people in the district have asked, the district is in very strong, strong financial shape, and that's a really great thing for a variety of reasons. Jane's also really good at managing, so that, that's, that's very cool.
Thank you. Capital improvement, Johnson safety, Jeff and Paul.
We met the other day with even Hal. Really more just a re-education for me and the learning for, oh, that's some of the basic guidelines and the groundwork for what we're going to do. Other than that, we need a couple of kind of just other things to create a nation.
Thank you. Policy and personnel, we have, you know, the policy, but Mr. Magid, we expect to come in the end of August with the state in this. Yeah, state in this.
More policy.
More policy.
They call me policy Paul.
Policy Paul.
That's why you're on that committee. Okay. Academic.
Academic. We did meet last week, and obviously, given the COVID situation, the past year has been a challenge for our students, and it's been a greater burden on our teachers, our families, and everything else. But a number of our teachers were able to step up this summer under Jennifer McCoy's direction and establish a summer school program. There were some highlights from that time period during class session. One of the summer learning program, which ran basically the month of June, have credits were earned by forty-eight students. This equates back to about one-point-eight courses that the forty-eight students needed to earn back to begin to get back on track toward graduation. And one of the things we talked about is going forward, not that we have the S R money, COVID money coming in that's going to be used over the next two to three years, is to also set up programs for students involving tutoring, some weight shape reform, whether it's age-based digital, et cetera, et cetera. And the coming year, just to help expedite the transition of these students back to an on-track type thing, because this is a huge issue nationally for every education system, getting the kids back on track. And people are off to a very good start in that regard. During session two of the summer learning program, which was the end of June through July 22nd, one-hundred-and-twenty-four, so nearly seventy-five percent increase, have credits were earned by seventy-seven students. This equates to about one-point-six courses that the seventy-seven students needed to get back to begin, to get back on the back on track toward graduation program. And finally, we had eighty elementary students spent the month of July brushing up on their reading and math skills. The kids, as you might anticipate, at that age were very eager to attend and learn a whole lot in a short period of time, just in time to start the summer year. And the good thing is, it's hopefully with the retention, because it was so close to the start of the school year. That will carry over going into the start of the new school year next week. I have four left.
Thank you. My legislative and student achievement, I don't think anything, neither. Okay, we are two. Board discussion.
Yeah, quick question, Hal. None of us thought about it. Club sports, do they qualify as the Jim Weber Night School, like a cross-country or football? I don't need to add to that, but can you look into that? I don't know what qualifies.
I'm going to guess no, because it needs to be probably a sanctioned sport, but I will absolutely check into that.
Right, thanks.
Anything else?
I just wanted to congratulate, you know, Caroline, I had the pleasure of going yesterday. There was so much energy in that room between the staff and the students and everybody. It was not what you normally anticipate for a eight o'clock in the morning type thing. And, you know, let's put it this way, there was, the goal was mostly off during that time period. There was a lot of energy from the music, the presentations, and anything else. I thought it was really good, really well done.
Yep, thank you.
And I'd like to hear that there are still free breakfast and lunch for all students this year, in case anybody missed that. But we are not just getting away with that program from federal government, so.
Probably snack, Hal, I was also-
No, none of those will be purchased.
They will be open.
They'll be open, well, clay.
Clay and Isen, they were going, I know that the Isen Tower and Clay will be open also immediately. Elementary, she's planning on in the future, just that hard way.
Okay. I know there's something, but there wasn't enough food, and the kids couldn't go buy-
Teenage kids and not enough food? Come on.
And I really wanted to thank all the teachers and personnel last year. It was such a turbulent year for everybody, and we all made it, and we're all better for it. And I just think, kudos to everybody from custodians to bus drivers. We give this all a learning experience, and even if this year goes a little sideways, we know how to handle it now. So I'm really pleased, and I'm grateful to be a part of this district. Anything from anybody else? Executive session? No, do you? Okay, announcement of special and regular monthly meetings, I guess, September 21st.
Correct, that's what I can see.
Six o'clock. And that's all I can. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Go call.
Mr. Magid?
Yes.
Mr. Sadek?
Yes.
Mr. Zbyski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molner?
Yes. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mrs. Coy, for kicking over that position.